I'd like to call this regular city council meeting to order, eighteen hundred hours, August eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Roll call. We've got Councilman Wolford, Councilman Marsh, myself, Councilman Dixon, Councilman Nielsen, all in chambers. We have Vice Mayor Payne on the phone, and I believe that Councilman Kessler is out of state. So, we will move on to that, and next order of business will be the pledge of allegiance and the invocation. Councilman Marsh, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The invocation was presented by Kip Meyer.
Our gracious Father God, we just thank you for your presence with us. We thank you for the love that you pour out on us, whether we deserve it in our actions or not. And Father God, we just pray that you might be present with your wisdom to assist the leadership of this city, to serve the residents, to serve you in a way that's pleasing, that you might make an impact on this city and on this state. We give you praise for what you're doing. Thank you, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Kip. Moving on to item four on the agenda, the consent agenda, the chair would obtain a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion at a second. Do we have any comments or questions on this? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
No opposed. Moving on to item five, call to the public for non-agenda items?
There are none.
We have, item six, call to the public for items on the agenda?
There are none.
There are none. Moving on to item seven, new business, discussion of possible action. Uh, seven A, hash knife statue presentation. We've got a presentation from the captain of the hash knife, Mr. Reynolds.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, the video you're about to watch is from the artist. I, I took this video up in Utah. I spent five hours with the artist, uh, and I had Pat kind of shorten it up a little bit, and so, uh, I just want to thank the council members for all your support of the hash knife and, and, uh, hopefully we can get this put in this year, and, uh, it'll be right on sixty-six, so it'll promote both, both, uh, the sixty-six, Route sixty-six and the Hashknife Pony Express. This, uh, this next year will be a sixty-fifth ride, uh, which in itself is a milestone, uh, longest continuous hash knife pony express, uh, in the nation. So, without further ado, if you've started, thank you.
Hi, my name is Scott Rogers, and I was commissioned to do the sculpture of the Hashknife Pony Express and, uh, for the city of Holbrook, Arizona. And this is a rider, and he's got a, uh, a bag. Is, is this a railroad bag? What was this? This is a railroad mailbag, and inside are letters, because mail, to this day, in this modern day, mail is carried officially with the United States Post Office on horseback, and it's carried over two hundred miles from Holbrook, Arizona, to Scottsdale. And this is to honor the men that do that. And something that's really unique, you won't see this in hardly any other sculptures, but the hash knife people asked me to do this. They wanted a left-handed cowboy, and, uh, if you remember that, Mark, but they wanted a left-handed cowboy, so this rider, most cowboys that ride, they're right-handed, and they always hold the reins in the left hand. But because of where this sculpture is going, in the city of Holbrook, and for the public to be able to see it, and really to have the impact that they want it to have for the passersby in their vehicles, they wanted the mailbag on this, uh, left side. And so, there's the, and in order to do that, we had to make him a left-handed cowboy, which means he has the reins in his right hand. And, uh, these are split reins, if you come back around that other side, Mark. These are split reins. There's all different kinds of reins that, uh, different people use, but I love these split reins because I felt it added to the action of the, uh, the event. And, uh, it was fun to research, really fun to research out.
The video I took was about thirty minutes long, so, uh, we decided that we would shorten it up.
Thank you.
But that's where we're at. We met with the artist and stuff. We went down and we, we looked at where we were gonna put it at and stuff, and so, uh, we're, we're grudging forward. We've, uh, we've raised, uh, sixty thousand dollars out of the eighty already, so, uh, we're twenty thousand dollars short, but we're working diligently every day to, to raise that money so we can get him finished, paid off. And, uh, I had no idea, I had no idea because I don't know anything about art or anything, because I went to Holbrook High School. But I, I didn't realize that they take that clay and they cut it up into forty pieces, and each one of those pieces are bronzed, and then he takes it back to a shop in Logan and welds them all back together.
Wow.
Don't, don't ask me how he knows which one is which, because I, I didn't. But, uh, thank you very much for letting me present that. Yes?
Mark, how, how durable are the reins and the other straps?
That, that, they're, they're gonna be a quarter inch, they're gonna be a quarter inch, uh, uh, thick.
Okay.
We've had a couple other people afraid kids are gonna pull on it, and he guaranteed you that it's not gonna, they're not gonna break.
Oh.
Because, because the reins are one inch thick, uh, wide and, and a quarter inch thick.
Okay, very good. That was my concern.
Yeah, that, they're not, they won't slip out. We, we, we had that question when we met with him.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Anybody else have any questions, Kip?
Yeah.
So, when is the completion estimate?
We're gonna, we, we want to reveal it on the swearing-in, July, January thirty-first, at Tuesday, before we get sworn in. We, we've had a discussion about, uh, maybe doing a, a parade about ten-thirty, back, back an hour, ten-thirty, come down Buffalo in front of the kids. Then we're gonna meet at Gillespie Park and unveil it at eleven. That way, everybody that wants to talk and speak and everything, then we'll be, we'll be sworn in there. We'll, we'll line up along the mural there, and we'll get sworn in right there.
Well, more. So who's the cowboy? Do we know who it is?
No. He told me that he didn't have enough clay to put me on there, so, uh, so, so, uh, we don't know who it is.
And a mustache kind of looks like Scott Self.
Yeah, yeah. Well, he wanted to do, he, he, uh, he didn't have a mustache on there, and then he put one on. And if you noticed in the thing, he had a, he had a piece of clay in his hand. And as he was, we were talking, he was going around fixing things.
Oh, that's funny.
Could, you know, I mean, he could, and he says every time he looks at it, he's fixing and changing and, but, uh...
So who's the lefty?
Who, uh, who's the lefty?
Yeah.
Nobody. What, what we want to do was, the, the, uh, the statue is gonna kind of be this way on the corner, facing towards Scottsdale, but we wanted, we wanted to have the mailbag in the left hand where everybody could see that he was carrying, carrying the, uh, the mailbag, so they could see it at all four corners. They could, they can watch, look at it. And I, I had, we had somebody that showed up there at our meeting, and, uh, they said, hey, you know what? This thing could be bigger than standing on the corner, for a simple reason that this is a hash knife statue on Route, on the ninety-degree turn, turn both directions on sixty-six. And I told him, I didn't even think about it that way. But he said, yeah, this thing could be, we could be getting all kinds of people stopping and taking pictures and stuff.
Cool.
Very well.
All right.
Mark, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we will be moving on to seven B, resolution twenty-two dash oh-seven, a resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement for the White Mountain Regional Special Response Team. Chief.
Mayor and council, thank you. Um, before you, it was an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Holbrook and the White Mountain Regional Response Team. That's the, uh, special response team that will come out in like a major incident of a barricaded subject or a violent subject that we might be looking for. We, um, the agreement refers to participating agencies. Those are agencies who have people in the, on the team, which we don't due to, I don't have enough people. So, to have somebody on there full-time, but we can also use them as a user, um, and it requires an annual payment over five years, um, which is the length of the contract. Um, this year, the, um, payment was made on our behalf from Rico Funds that were donated to the city of Holbrook from the Navajo County Attorney's Office. Um, so there's no out-of-pocket expense for us this year, but, um, there will be in the following years, a thirty-five hundred dollar annual fee, which, if you take into consideration, if we don't have this agreement and we call the SWAT team, then they can bill us for every single individual who's there, every piece of equipment that they use, gas, oil, munitions, things of that nature, which could easily amount to a lot more than thirty-five hundred dollars. So, I'm requesting that this agreement be accepted and put into effect for us.
Okay, let me go ahead and read the resolution in whole, resolution twenty-two dash oh-seven, resolution of the mayor and city council, city of Holbrook, Navajo County, Arizona, approving an intergovernmental agreement for the White Mountain Regional Special Response Team, SRT, whereas it is the desire of the city council to partner with participating jurisdictions to enhance the ability to respond to situations when a specialized response team is appropriate. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the council of the city of Holbrook, Arizona, section one, the White Mountain Regional Special Response Team, intergovernmental agreement is approved. Section two, the mayor is authorized to execute this resolution, passed and adopted by the mayor and city council of the city of Holbrook this eleventh day of August, two thousand and twenty-two. Chair will entertain a motion.
I move the adopt resolution twenty-two dash seven.
Second.
A little motion at a second. Do we have any comments or questions on this item?
Yeah.
I have a question, just want to clarify for the folks watching for the record that this is for five years and that we have an option to extend it, um, for two additional five-year terms.
And did you have input for this whole agreement?
Um, I did. Um, I'm no, I'm no longer a voting member, but I do attend the meetings, and I do have input.
Okay. And this is not the first time that we've approved this, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. If there's any questions?
So, do you have like specific officers that you have designated that would be called out for this response team?
So, the, the team, um, is already together, um, and each agency gives a person to the team, um, and then they're subject to call out when, when they're needed. We don't currently have anybody on the team as a participating agency. We're just a user agency.
Do you anticipate eventual, you know, in the future, having somebody designated?
Um, so my first priority is the protection of the city here, um, and with our, um, with people resigning and leaving and open positions, I don't have enough people to dedicate some to this, um, because they would be needed here. Eventually, I would love to, yes?
Well, because the reason I ask is, you know, I'm sure they have training for these teams, right?
Right.
So, would our guys be getting the training?
So, they're, um, we don't receive any training with this team at all since we don't have a member. Um, they have a, they have a process where you have to apply, and then you respond out, and it's like a two- or three-day testing process that's very rigorous, um, both mentally, physically. Um, you have to be a pretty good shot with a firearm, um, to be accepted onto the team. Um, a few years ago, um, we sent two people, um, who both tried out for the team, but they were not successful in the firearms portion of the training.
One more. Have we ever utilized?
Um, we have in the past. Since I've been here, we haven't used them, um, but we have in the past used them for barricaded subjects or violent, you know, violent barricaded subjects, because they have the specialized equipment with a bulletproof shields, a bulletproof vehicle, things of that nature, which are costly that we don't have, but this agreement gives us the ability to use it when needed.
Yeah, and the only reason I ask is, uh, especially being a park ranger out there on I forty, you know, we've had several instances where it could get, got pretty hairy, you know?
Yes.
So, cool. Okay, thank you, chief. Anybody else? Chief, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to seven C. Oh, I guess we gotta vote on it. Motion second, resolution requires a roll call.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Councilmember Marsh?
Aye.
Councilmember Nielsen?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Wolford?
Aye.
Mayor Young?
Aye.
Motion classes? No, just move on. Two, seven C, canvas of primary elections, uh, the city clerk, Lisa.
So, the canvas of the left election, the primary election that was held on August the second of two thousand and twenty-two, um, two, two thousand three hundred and thirty-four registered voters, um, there were nine hundred and thirty-six ballots cast, there were zero blank ballots cast, and council member write-in votes, there were eleven. Votes for, votes cast for council member total amount of two thousand two hundred and sixty-two votes. Um, and as follows, Karina Pack received four hundred and thirty-nine votes, Robert Black, four hundred and thirty-four votes, Arsenia Pacheco, three hundred and eighty-seven votes, Adam Marsh, three hundred and seventy-two votes, Kristi Patterson, three hundred and sixty votes, Barbara Life, two hundred and fifty-nine votes. Three candidates, candidates received a majority of the votes cast for the three open seats, and the following three candidates received the highest number of valid votes cast for council member and are hereby issued certificate of election. That would be Karina Pack with fifty-nine percent, Robert Black with fifty-eight percent, and Arsenia Pacheco with fifty-two percent. So I would like to hand out these certificate of elections. It says, I, Lisa Hunt, clerk of the city of Holbrook, Navajo County, Arizona, do certify, do hereby certify that a primary election held on August second, two thousand and twenty-two, and Karina Pack, our city of Pacheco, and Robert Black were elected to the office of council member of the city of Holbrook, as appears by the unofficial result approved by the city council on August eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two, acting as a canvassing board. And witness here, where I have hereto set my hand and affix the official seal of the city of Holbrook this eleventh day of August, two thousand and twenty-two. So if you want to go ahead and come up, I'll do your certificates. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Let me get your shirt and we go together. You may proceed. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And then, per Holbrook City Code one dash two seven dash seven, D, newly elected council members will begin their terms at the expiration of the current council member terms in December. For the votes, votes for mayor, Kathleen Smith, fifty, five hundred and seventy-two votes, and Jay Merrill Young, three hundred and thirty votes. Kathleen Smith received a majority of valid votes cast for mayor and is hereby issued a certificate of election. Kathleen, I, Lisa Hunt, clerk of the city of Holbrook, can you come up? Navajo County, Arizona, do hereby certify that a primary election held on August second, two thousand and twenty-two, and Kathleen Smith was elected to the office of mayor of the city of Holbrook, as appears by the official returns approved by the city council on the August eleventh, two thousand, two thousand and twenty-two, acting as a canvassing board. And witness whereof I have hereto set my hand and affix the official seal of the city of Holbrook this eleventh day of August, two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay, uh, we didn't finish the rest of this meeting, and then we get to swear her in, and I get to go home. Item eight, summary of current events, and reports, uh, our condolences to, uh, Sandy Robinson family, uh, fortunately the loss of her son recently saddens, saddens me, saddens, I've been good friends with her and her husband for quite a few years. Moving on, what I would like to do at this time is, uh, basically give my final report. This last time, you guys will have to sit here and listen to me. So, I'd like to start by thanking the citizens of Holbrook for allowing me to serve as your mayor. And I'd like to highlight some of the things that we've accomplished in the past three years. When I came to the city, the budget was in an absolute mess. You couldn't make heads or tails of it. I went in and I talked to Ted. We looked at the budget. They had accounts co-mingled. You couldn't tell what was coming from where, what was being spent where, but that was quickly resolved. We now have a very well-defined budget. It's very easy to understand. Everything's in order. You know how much the water department's making versus what they're spending. We separated the water department out from the wastewater department, which it should have never been combined, but now we can see that information. And I want to thank Ted for his work on that. Another thing when I came that really bothered me, and it still bothers me today, is the past mayor that was recalled had been gone for over a year and a half, and we were still using his rubber stamped signature to sign checks. That really bothered me. I quickly got with Ted. We went to the bank. We redid the accounts, and, uh, we added Ted, myself, the vice mayor, Pat Nichols, Lisa Hunt, and Randy Sullivan, who's the finance director who wasn't even on the account prior. So that was quickly resolved. Another thing is that I know there's always been discussion, there's been discussion since I lived here. I've been here fifty-five years about blight buildings, old buildings, and stuff like that in town. When I came in as mayor, the old Knights Inn had been halfway torn down. We were able to complete the demolition of that building, and I believe it was May of two thousand and eighteen, the Magnuson Motel burnt down. When I got here, nothing had been done. It'd been over a year that that thing sat there. Nothing had been done. I sat with Ted in the office, and he formed a letter, sent to the owners, dealt with the insurance companies, and it was within a few months after we started that process that demolition of that building was taking place. And now, as most of you know or may not know, there's a new, uh, Family Dollar Dollar Tree gonna be built on that lot here shortly, a new ten thousand five hundred square foot building, new store in Holbrook. And that is all thanks to the city manager and his hard work, putting, putting people together. Moving on, the, uh, down east Florida, the one hundred block of east Florida, about five years ago, a trailer house burnt down over there. It sat there for a good five years. We had the city manager looked at it, took the initiative, and we got that cleaned up. We'll move up the road a little bit. And I know the trailer that was sitting in the lot next to Woody's was there for many years because my great uncle put it there as a restaurant over forty years ago. That trailer was demolished, removed, the lots cleaned, it was sold, and now there's gonna be a new service station and convenience store built on that site. Okay? Up on Desert View, about five years ago, there was a trailer that burnt down, and then I believe it was last summer, there was another one that burnt down. Both of those had been cleaned up and removed. By working with the property owners and the city, we were able to get those lots cleaned up. Let's see. The, uh, going on down the road, the old motel that sat right by, by the old Jerry's Restaurant, now the Buena Vida's Restaurant, most of you will remember, that motel got broke into and was caught, and got caught on fire by transits. The original owners had just left it there. We were able to get ahold of the owner, put him in contact with an investor. The investor bought it, has totally remodeled it, and it's now open for business as a green tree inn. These are just some of the small things that we've done. You know, there's been eight or nine, and I'm sure there's probably a couple other properties that I forgot, that have been cleaned up. And if anybody wants to say the city's not doing anything about blight, you're walking around with blinders on, because we've been working pretty hard the past three and a half years to get this stuff done. We've been able to purchase a lot of new equipment. Uh, when I came, we didn't even have a street sweeper. The old administration had allowed that thing to be run into the ground. We were able to buy a new street sweeper. Now we've got a good, working street sweeper. The loader for the street department, it was costing more to fix it than it was worth. We've been able to replace that. Unfortunately, we've ordered some other equipment, vehicles, dump truck and stuff, but completely out of our control, those items have been canceled. But we have ordered a new fire truck, and that's in the process of being taken care of. Was a, uh, rescue truck, the rescue truck they're using now, they bought new when I was on the department, and I retired, they didn't even buy it new. They bought it used when I was on the department. I retired in two thousand and nine. I can't remember what year that truck is, noise, do you, ninety-two?
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six?
That's when I got it. That's why we named it. It's...
Yeah, nineteen, nineteen eighty-six Chevrolet Van Pelt. Well, we got that used from a company in, uh, California. We're not putting used stuff back in the fleet anymore. We're ordering new stuff. So we've got a fire truck in the process of being built now for that. Uh, we ordered a dump truck for the cemetery and also a small trackhoe, so they could maneuver in and out of the gravesides without going over the top of them and get the proper equipment. We've got that coming. Unfortunately, the dump truck's been canceled, so we'll continue to pursue that, to get that done. Done a lot of work in the cemetery. There was a new section added to the cemetery recently. Unfortunately, with COVID the past couple years and kind of an elevated amount of deaths, we're starting to fill those up pretty quick. But Ted has had the lot behind the cemetery completely cleaned up, which, uh, we were talking to property owners over there and telling them, you know, they need to cut their weeds, and they looked at that lot and say, why should we cut ours when you're not cutting yours? So we had that whole lot cleaned up, and now it's ready for an expansion of the cemetery when it's needed. City manager's applied for a lot of grants. Uh, don't know if most of you have gone around the park? Don't know if most of you have gone around the park, all the parks, Hunt Park, Lewis Park, Luzitsky Park, we've replaced the fencing around the ballfields, we put in new dugouts, we put in new bleachers. All on Hunt Park, we're working on picnic tables and stuff for the other parks, we've replaced all the old dilapidated bent-up picnic tables that were over at Hunt Park with the grant that's scheduled to rebuild the basketball court, add a pickleball court, update the, uh, skating park, and a few other things that are going on over there. Also in that time, the, all the shower heaters in the bathrooms at the pool, they were shot. They had not been maintained very well for a long time. Those have all been replaced with all brand-new heaters, on-demand wall heaters, so we've done that. And like I say, it's not just Hunt Park, it's all the parks. These grants are, these grants are for all of the park. And as most of you have heard, all of you should know that, uh, we were able this year to give all the city employees at least a six point five percent pay increase. In the last ten years that I was employed with the city, the largest increase I got was three percent, largest increase that most of us got, was less than three percent or three percent in ten years. The city pay scale is all now up to date. Winslow did a study and we got that information to bring our pay scale up to today's standards, to where it should be. The last time it was updated was two thousand and two. It hadn't been updated since. By doing that, it has pushed all the wages up, and this pay scale is going to have to be continually modified because of federal regulations coming on with the minimum wage going up to fifteen dollars an hour in a few years. So that whole scale's gonna have to continue to go up because it's not fair to hire somebody in at fifteen dollars an hour and somebody that's been here for five to ten years, they're only making thirty cents more, no, they have to move up compared to what the scale is. And I talked to Ted about that the other day, about how that was gonna be funded, he's got it all figured out, how it's gonna be funded. We've got, he's already looking at putting that money aside so those raises can go into effect. The police department, they've been able to purchase some new vehicles. The AC unit on the building, which was pretty much in horrible shape, hadn't been repaired, hadn't been replaced or anything in years, it's, they've got a brand-new AC unit on the place, all brand-new ductwork because some of the ductwork was missing, broken, and a lot of it, when they did the additions over there, they didn't even put ductwork in some of those other offices. That's all been solved, that's all been taken care of, and if you'll drive by and look, now, just recently in the past month, we put a whole brand-new roof on that building. It used to be a metal roof that was leaked, I mean, especially on the fire department side of it, you'd go in there and it was raining just as hard outside as it was inside. That's all been repaired. And along also with the, uh, improvements, all the officers got a pay raise. Ted was able to bring the pay raises up and some of them, not quite, not as much as others, but you're talking in the neighborhood of eight to ten percent increases, so we could bring our officers online with local communities, Snowflake, Winslow, so we could bring them up to where it's fair for them. Yeah, it's hard for us to attract new officers when we have Navajo County here, but there's absolutely no way the city of Holbrook can compete with Navajo County wages. They make a lot more money than we do. That's just like saying, why aren't our officers getting paid the same as DPS? State has a lot more money than the city of Holbrook does. But what the, for what they have to do, our officers are getting a very good wage. Also, when I came on, it was approximately about nine point five million dollars in retirement debt for the police department. In the past, and I'd looked at the paperwork, in the past, they were paying just what they needed to, you know? They weren't paying any extra or anything, they paid their minimum. Well, unfortunately, the interest was outrunning what we were paying. So right now, Ted's got it figured in the budget to where we're adding an additional six hundred thousand dollars to the police department specifically for that fund. In the three years that I've been here, we've brought that nine point five million dollar debt down to about six point five million dollars. He shaved three million dollars off of it, and he is in line with the way he's got the budget laid out now, to have that paid off in at least ten years, hopefully a lot less, the way the budget's lined up. Other improvements, completion of the city hall remodel. During COVID, we had to shut everything down, the gym was totally remodeled when they went in there, it kinda stunk, and we looked at everything and they pulled the floor up, well, when they put the wood floor down in there, they didn't take up the, uh, old carpet. There was black mold underneath there, it was, it was nasty. So they had to pull all that flooring out and redo it. And now, now, it's, it's a pretty nice facility over there now. Along with the equipment, we, for some reason, were using a maintenance contract with people out of Phoenix to maintain the equipment. I can't remember exactly what we were paying, but it was astronomical to have them people drive all the way up here from Phoenix to fix a thirty-dollar part. You know, they're charging us two hundred, two hundred and fifty-dollar travel to fix a thirty-dollar part. Ted dropped the contract and figured, you know, we've got the talent here, they can fix it within the city, using, using city workers, and that's been done. The Metchusak Center across the street, we picked that up from APS quite a few years back for only a dollar, but not much was done, they went in and mopped the floors, but they hadn't changed anything. We've gone in there, taken out some walls, rebuilt a few things, the kitchen now works, it's a good skit, now it's a good-sized meeting building. And anybody who drive by, challenging me, drive by on the weekends, almost every weekend, that place is occupied. They rent it out quite frequently. As a matter of fact, I was on the, I was in city hall today when Pat took a call from somebody wanting to rent that building. Not only that, not only the gym, not only city hall, we've rebuilt the community building over by the library, and that's becoming the same as this, where people can use it for repairs. Okay, grant money, with the grant money, it's allowed us to totally rebuild the runway up at the airport, and now we've got another grant, we're working on another grant now that's gonna rebuild the apron where the airplane parked around the hangars and stuff like that. This is all being done with grant money, okay? So I'm kinda excited to see how that's gonna turn out when we get that done. This year, the council, not just me, voted to spend the CDBG grant money in Sun Valley. The Sun Valley Water System, the city picked it up quite a few years back, and basically have been holding it together with bubble gum and duct tape. There's not been much money spent on that system at all. Right now, I believe Ted told me that we've already sent out bids for a new well, a new tank, and a water purifier. So we're gonna rebuild the Sun Valley Water System so those people have adequate, adequate water. With all of this said, uh, I look at the budget, and I believe between the council, myself, and our city manager, we've put the posit, the financial position of the city in a lot better shape to where now, we have a loader, we have a sweeper, where we can start doing much-needed road repairs that have been neglected for a long time. He's already got, I believe, in the fall, we've already got some that's scheduled for crack sealing, potholes, we've got chip sealing scheduled, and we've got slurry sealing, uh, scheduled, and that's gonna start as soon as this fall. But, when I came on, the street department couldn't even afford the rubber for their crack machine. We had nothing. So, if anybody wants to sit out there and say, "I've done nothing," if anybody wants to say, "The city manager's done nothing," here it is, folks, we've been working our butts off, and I'm proud of what we've accomplished as a council. At this time, I would like to say to my council, thank you, I've enjoyed working with you, it's been a wonderful experience. Thank you to the city manager, thank you to our city staff, it's been a joy working with you, although I've worked with all of you for quite a few years, I was employed in the city for twenty-five years before I was stupid enough to take this. But it's kinda funny now, you know, being recalled, I was talking to another person that got recalled years ago, and he said, "Well, welcome to the island of misfit toys." So, okay, I will move on to council members, Councilman Moore.
Uh, first, thanks for your patience with me in the last meeting, and you talked, myself on one hand, on one, on the other leg, tried to talk to you, so thanks for your patience with me. Merrill, it has been a pleasure to serve in this council with you. I remember the first day, the first meeting that you, um, were sworn in, you brought that Robert's Rules book, and you gave us all a copy, and I've tried to keep it under the, under my pillow, along with, uh, the, the charter as revised in twenty nineteen, so that, that stuff soaks up into my brain, um, and you can use it. It's really riveting reading, I encourage you all to read it. Merrill, you've, you've exemplified a life of service, um, and, and we all know that this is by no means the end of your service for this city. I know, I have a lot of thinking to do along with you and Kip and Earl about how we can continue to serve the community, um, going forward, so, um, I'm looking forward to that. Congrats to the folks who won their seats. I'm happy for you, I'm focused, of course, on the work we have to do here in the next couple months. I'm hoping, I'm glad to see you all in the chambers tonight, and hoping we can continue to see you in the chambers, um, until December. With that, thank you all, uh, for your support, and, and I too am very proud of the work that we as a council, um, have done, and I'm, I'm looking forward to the next step. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Wolfert.
Yeah, uh, Merrill, I mean, we grew up together, only most, all my life, um, and it's been a pleasure. A lot has been accomplished in just the short time I've been here, a lot of people don't see the behind-the幕, uh, curtain, uh, task that have to be accomplished to get, to see the final product, but, uh, it's been a pleasure working with you. Congratulations to all the new elected officials, mayor-elect, for a very short time, right? And thanks for all coming out, yes, and, uh, look forward to finishing up these last three months and, uh, getting on to bigger, better things in Holbrook as, uh, part of a volunteer with Holbrook, so get back into participating, so.
Thank you, Kip. Councilman Dixon.
Mary Young, it has been a pleasure, uh, serving with you. I worked with you while you were with Animal Control at the, uh, Police Department, and, you've always had a very positive attitude, and I've appreciated you over these years. I think you've done a great job as mayor and, uh, have supported the, the city manager, and I appreciate the city manager for all the hard work that you both have done. What you read tonight was just a tip of the iceberg of the information and the things that have been accomplished while you've been here and while Ted has been here. And, uh, it's unfortunate that we have local propagandists that, um, make things up, like I said, in February, um, the, the charges leveled against you were, were, um, just that, was propaganda. And, um, unfortunately, people believe propagandists. And, um, I just wanna say thank you for your service, and again, it has been a, a pleasure serving with you, and I know that you, as well as Adam, are not done with Holbrook, Kip, and, uh, Earl. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tim. Councilman Nielsen.
Mayor, it's been an honor and a privilege serving with you. The greatest asset of Holbrook is the, is the people, and I think we all come together by the love we have for each other and for our community, and I, I thank you for the valiant service that Adam and Kip and Earl have given, and mayor, and your leadership, and welcome the new members of the council and our new mayor, and thank them for taking the interest to, to step forward and, and to lead, 'cause it's, it's a difficult thing, but thank you. On another note, school's started, there's a whole bunch of little kids running around, so I exhort everyone to be as careful as they can.
Very good. Thank you, Councilman. Vice Mayor Payne, I left you for last.
Oh, thank you. I would also like to thank you, Merrill, for, uh, all you've given the city over the last three, three and a half years. You have, uh, you've dived into this job and you've spent so much time at it and tried so hard to understand all the sides of it. You've been an inspiration and I appreciate you. I also would like to, uh, send my condolences to Sandy Robinson, her family. A heartache, wouldn't wish on anyone, and I just, uh, urge you to hold in close. I also would like to, uh, finally tell everybody that I broke my arm a few weeks ago, and that's why I haven't been to the recent council meetings. I was explaining earlier today that it has a lot to do with the fact that I haven't dressed myself, and, uh, I'll be back when I look a little more presentable. And, and finally, I also would like to welcome Mayor Smith tonight and the new council members in December, and, uh, we look forward to seeing you and getting to know you in the next few months. And, uh, thanks again, Merrill and Ted. And that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, Francie, you get well.
I'm, I'm working on it.
Okay, moving on to, uh, city manager.
Okay, uh, as the mayor had mentioned, we had done work, we're at the, uh, community center at the library, we have a few, a few more things to finish up, uh, Mike had to take a little break and did work on the pool, um, so he's going back over there, we have, uh, um, one bathroom needs to be finished and the kitchen, uh, remains to be completed. Put in a new floor, new paint, new LED lights, new refrigerator, new stove, new energy efficient windows, new tables and chairs, and we're in the process of doing some research on heating and cooling. And I know the people that, of our community that use these, the, the community center and the rec center are grateful for the renovations we've done, um, really has made a big difference. Thank you, staff, for all the work they've done on that. As mentioned, the police department has a new roof that is complete, uh, we're also installing a new cooling unit in the storage shed. The unit that we have in there is just not sufficient to keep it cool, so we'll, we'll be completing that. All the parks now have new picnic tables, most recently, uh, we installed new tables at Lewis Park. Streets Department, they're working on, continuing to work on pop sidewalks, you've seen those around town, and as they get to them, they're pulling them out and, and replacing them. We're also gonna be installing some guardrails on the Claws Road, apparently many years ago, uh, that, on one of the major curves over there, there were rails, and there hasn't been any rails for some time, and that's not been very safe, so we're getting a crew together to put ra, um, guardrails in place. We'll be working with the county, the county's gonna be hiring a firm to put some rails further on down the road, and so by working together, you can save on, uh, mobilization fees. It's really hard when you pull people up out of the valley, they charge quite a bit of money to come on up here, so if we can work optimally with other entities, it saves us some money. With the, as, uh, mayor had mentioned, uh, we've crack sealed a number of roads over the last few years, and now that that's done, uh, on a number of roads, we can move on to chip sealing and slurry sealing, so this fall we'll be doing that. And again, we will be working in cooperation with the county, uh, uh, this way saving money on mobilization fees, so we can look forward to getting some of our roads chipped and slurry sealed. I'm working with the owners of the motel that recently burned down, it's a process. Fortunately, we have this grant, this Brownsville grant, and trying to talk to the owner and... Uh, fortunately, we have this grant, this Brownsville grant, and trying to talk to the owner and help, help them understand that it's a benefit for him to be part of that process. Uh, next week, I'll be, uh, attending the National Brownfields Conference, so I'll be learning more about brownfields, there's gonna be quite a few, um, entities there. Uh, hopefully, learn more about, uh, grant opportunities that we can bring back to our community. And finally, I want to say thank you to Merrill Young, uh, really appreciate your time, um, really getting to you. Merrill, as probably many of you know, uh, faithfully was in my office every day, um, really cared about everything that happened. Uh, we had many conversations. We also did a, a number of projects around the community, uh, and I, I will miss our time together. I just want to say thank you, I really appreciate it, and so I have.
Thank you, Ted. Okay, moving on to item, uh, submissions of written petitions.
There are them.
Moving on to item ten, Mayor-elect, would you kindly step forward?
Do you have a break, should I begin? And repeat after me. I, Kathleen Smith.
I, Kathleen Smith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will.
Sorry. Support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and law.
Of the state of Arizona.
Of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear faith and true allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And defend them all, against all enemies.
And to defend them against all enemies.
For and and domestic.
For and and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartial discharge.
That I will faithfully and.
Impartially.
Impartially discharge.
The duties of mayor.
The duties of mayor.
In and for the city of Holbrook.
In and for the city of Holbrook.
Navajo County.
Navajo County.
State of Arizona.
State of Arizona.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Don't run off, don't run off, I got your seat one for you up here. It's all yours now.
We want a speech, Mayor.
Merrill, a second, the briefing later.
Congratulations. So your first order of business is to.
To adjourn it?
That's right.
Get that.
All right, so it looks like we're ready for adjournment, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I saw.
You don't have a motion?
Just adjourn.
All right, Jim, ready to get out of here? Thank you all for coming, we'll save the speeches for a different day, but we appreciate your support. And as Councilman, we do appreciate Merrill for the service that he's given the city, and we know that this is not the last we're gonna see of you, and we, we do appreciate you and your family. So with that, we are adjourned at six fifty-three P M.